Okay, it is now 7:10. We're going to start the city council meeting. Can I have roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Alderman Felix. Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Turner. Alderman Donahworth.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Hayes.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Guzman.
Present.
Alderman Martinez.
Present.
Mayor Taylor.
Present.
You have a quorum, ma'am.
Thank you. Can I have Alderman Turner and Alderman Felix seated, please? Yeah, they're coming. You want to...can I have a...
Alderman Felix?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Everyone's present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I'd like to have the invocation done by Pastor Timothy Jones Roboto from the Church of God in Christ. I'm not sure if pastor is here tonight. Okay, I'm going to have Alderman Bolton give our invocation.
Okay, let us bow our heads. O faithful God, before we petition and ask anything of you, we just want to stop and say thank you. Thank you for your grace, your mercy, and compassion towards us. We thank you for strengthening us time and time again. So, Lord, now we request that your Spirit help us to, as a council and as a city, to govern our affairs with your wisdom and discretion. And we ask that you just use us as imperfect people to help, seem like almost make perfect decisions. So, Lord, we thank you in advance...we thank you for the advancement of this city and you strengthen us as we walk through this agenda, leading this city to a position of empowerment. Thank you, amen.
Amen. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Well, it's hard to believe we're in November. The nights are darker. We're getting to the holidays. So, I just want to welcome everybody to the city council meeting. Again, I want to remind people, I say this every time, our council agendas go online the Friday before the city council meeting. Please take a look at them. If there's anything that you want to come to council with, please, that's what we're here for. And again, anything that you want to look at in terms of update or information, please go to our website at waukeganil.gov. We're going to go back on schedule, so I'm going to have Chief Pazir come up. Even though he talked at the last meeting, we both had, we had both Chief Pazir and Chief Navarro talk, so there might not be a big update, but he's here to update us this time.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, and council members for allowing me to speak for a minute about the Waukegan Fire Department. As of November 1st, the Waukegan Fire Department has responded to 10,659 calls, which is about 50 calls ahead of where we were last year at this point. Of these calls, 67% are medical calls, and of the medical calls, we have had 100 cardiac arrests, 312 calls for alcohol use, 189 drug-related calls, 997 traumatic calls that have gone to Vista, and 106 trauma calls that have gone to Condell. We have used our Lucas Device 98 times, and we have given 159 doses of Narcan on drug overdoses so far this year. We had four significant fires during the month of October totaling just over $89,000. For the year, we've had over $14 million in damages from fires in our town. Our Fire Prevention Bureau did 429 inspections for the month of October totaling just over 3,400 inspections so far for the year. They have also done 44 occupancy inspections verifying permissible occupancy levels. In a little over a week, we will be graduating another new group of our CERT members. For those of you that are not familiar with our CERT team, CERT stands for Community Emergency Response Team. The CERT members are all volunteer and are trained to basic disaster response skill levels. Some of the skills they are trained in include fire safety, light search and rescue, team organization, and disaster medical operations. We currently have 30 active members and six that will be graduating next Thursday. The city Waukegan and the Waukegan Fire Department put on two classes per year, and if you are interested, please call our headquarters fire station at 847-249-5410. And last, and some good news, please tune into Good Day Chicago on WFLD Fox next Thursday, which will be November 14th at 8:00 a.m., to see some of your Waukegan firefighters cooking up a special dish on a segment called Cooking with Fire. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief. See, there's many, many talents that we don't even know. I want to remind people that we are already in leaf pickup. We've already started. Things have gone so much smoother this year. Again, we have LRS, and they're doing a great job, but I want to remind people some of the rules for pickup. One, the leaves must be raked to the end of the, like by the curb, but not into the street. These trucks don't have rakers on, and they don't have, you know, they don't have a person that comes out and does it. There's no machine that does it. They just have like a vacuum that vacuums them up. That vacuum goes about nine feet, so you don't want to be farther than that, or they won't be able to reach it. You don't want to have things around poles, fire hydrants, mailboxes, and other areas that aren't open space. They try to adhere to the schedule as closely as possible. Sometimes they get a little behind if things are, you know, the weather is difficult for them, but they do try to really stick to things. They cannot collect leaves if there are parked cars. Now, one of the things that we're running into is there are certain days when you parked a car for alternate parking, and then it's a leaf cleanup day. If you haven't, if a day is off because of that, please move your car to the other side, and we will not ticket you, but we will do the leaf cleanups on those days. Don't put leaves in plastic bags, because anything that's in a bag has to have a sticker on. And remember, those things that are in bags are only good until December 15th. At that point, they're done picking up bags for the summer, or for the season, sorry. Leaf burning is prohibited, so please don't try and do this where you collect all the leaves in your yard and you try and burn them, because not in Waukegan. They cannot collect the leaves if they're frozen. So, again, some of this is weather-dependent. We're a little lucky. I know around by me, the leaves are falling a little earlier this year than they did last year, so we should have our leaves down by the time we hit the frozen parts, so please get those done as quickly as you can. And one thing I want to remind people of is, we get this a lot, where people will say, "I put my leaves out, and the truck missed them and didn't pick them up." I just want to tell you, LRS has cameras and GPS systems on their truck. So, the first thing we do is call LRS and say, "Hey, you missed this spot," and they'll say, "Oh, no, no, our truck was there at such and such a time, and here's a picture of us being on that street." So, don't call us if you know you didn't put the leaves out and you want to say afterwards, "Oh, they skipped my house," because LRS will know. I also want to, at this time, congratulate, on October 27th, Shiloh Baptist Church of Waukegan celebrated its 107th anniversary. I'm sure everybody knows how much these historical celebrations in our city are important, and Waukegan's longstanding churches are a part of our beloved community and our charm. 100-plus years is not a blink of the eye, and we're grateful to our partners of faith for always providing space for prayer in our community. And again, happy anniversary from all the elected officials up here and our city staff. For some of you who have seen it in the paper, and we've talked about it here, the demolition of the old water tower on Keller Avenue has started. We've sent mailers and posted everything on social media. We've talked about it at city council meetings. But again, I want to remind people that it's starting already to come down. They started last Thursday afternoon, and they'll continue until December. And if you have any questions, please feel free to call the city. Veterans Day Parade and Ceremony will be held on Monday, November 11th. The parade kicks off at 10:45, and the ceremony is at the Veterans Plaza in downtown Waukegan here. If you want to participate, you can call 847-599-2525 for the application, and the city is not accepting horses in the parade because we don't have a cleanup crew that day. Christmas tree lighting is on November 30th at 5:00 p.m. And again, you can always find anything that you need about what's going on in the city on our social media pages or at our website at waukeganil.gov. Tomorrow is Election Day. This is one of the most important ways to shape our communities and the future. Please take this opportunity. If you haven't done early voting, please go. Your vote matters. Every single vote matters, but your voice matters. So, take the opportunity tomorrow. If you haven't voted already, I know they were crowded over across the street today, so I'm expecting long lines tomorrow, but please do it. And with that, I'm going to hand everything off to Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a resolution, and Mayor, you need to have a first and a second on that.
Yep, can I have a first and a second? And this is a...
First.
Who was the first?
I'll second.
Okay, Alderman Donahworth was the first, Alderman Bolton was the second. And this is a Resolution 24R277, celebrating the life of Daniel Booner Deek. We need to take a vote on that. And then, the family is here. We actually presented the resolution, but I would like the family, when we take the vote, to stand up and be acknowledged. You are just wonderful, and I want you to be recognized for being here this evening. So, after the vote, I want you to stand up, okay?
Would you like me to read it now, ma'am?
Yes, please.
Whereas Daniel Deek was born on June 29th, 1942, in Waukegan, the son of George and Marge, Nick Casey Deek. And whereas Daniel Deek attended Immaculate Conception Grade School, and whereas Daniel Deek attended Waukegan Township High School, while he was on the football, wrestling, and baseball teams before graduating in 1960. And whereas Daniel Deek attended Cameron Junior College in Lawton, Oklahoma, and was on the school's football team, which won the Junior College Rose Bowl game in Pasadena, California in 1961. And the team went on to be inducted into the Cameron University Sports Hall of Fame. And whereas Daniel Deek received a football scholarship to Drake University, where he went on to earn his bachelor's degree. And whereas Daniel Deek was a volunteer coach for Waukegan Youth Football and the Waukegan East High School Football Team. And whereas Daniel Deek married Barbara Westcott, also a lifelong Waukegan resident, and on October 10th, 1970, and they were married for 54 years. And whereas Daniel Deek opened the Starlight Lounge at 1210 Washington Street in the mid-'70s, which he later changed the name to Booner's Place, a place where people gathered and stories were shared. And whereas Daniel Deek and Booner's Place provided many jobs for Waukegan residents over the years and sponsored countless adult softball, volleyball, and basketball leagues, and fundraisers for Waukegan athletes. And whereas Daniel Deek was considered the mayor of Washington Street, where he was a stranger to none and a friend to all. And whereas Daniel Deek went to be with the Lord on Saturday, October 12th, 2024. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Ann B. Taylor and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois, do hereby honor the life and legacy of Daniel Deek and recognize his selfless service to the community and his love of Waukegan. Be it further resolved that a suitably embossed copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented to the Deek family at his visitation on Friday, October 25th, 2024, and entered into the public record at the Waukegan City Council Meeting on Monday, November 4th, 2024, adopted this 25th day of October, 2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I have a voice vote? All those in favor of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I don't think so. Why, some communities, we, you know, we used to watch a show called Cheers, we always had Booners. And I got to be frank, Booners is better. But please stand and be recognized by this council. We're going to go ahead and take a picture, so if you can all line up here, I'll come down, and everybody else can line up behind, so we get the height.
Thank you, Deek family, for coming. I'm sure there's a spot over at Booners right now. Mayor, we have two more proclamations that are important to the community. We won't be reading them, but they are on the board docs for anyone to refer to. There are two national proclamations. November is Lung Cancer Awareness Month, very important, along with November is Diabetes Awareness Month. Both of them are on the agenda. Thank you.
I also want to comment, as a mayor who, I've talked openly about this, I used to be diabetic, so diabetic, diabetes is a very important thing for me. I want to say I am not diabetic anymore after losing 100 pounds, but I do want the community to understand, there's so many of us that suffer with diabetes, and even though I don't actively have it now, I understand all the problems that come with diabetes, and I think it's really important, if you have not been tested, please go. Don't neglect your health. It is the most important thing you have in life. With that, we're going to move on to audience time.
Yes, we're getting the note right there. You have three minutes. I don't think there's going to be too many people on that. Thank you. Ms. Margaret Crossco, you're our one and only.
Oh, yes, good evening. Tonight, I have several things. Let me begin. First of all, Mayor, your tree program, just to make you aware, there are city yards, I guess, are dropping off the trees. They're dead. According to people, they were just laying there for a long time, no one gave them water, and now we have all these dead trees laying all over Waukegan. Next thing is that, Waukegan taxpayers, just to let you know, according to employees here at City Hall, state that George Bridges, where's he at, hiding in the...oh, he's standing right over there, okay, I'm glad he showed up today. He's been MIA campaigning for you, Mayor, okay? We have eyes and ears everywhere. The next thing is that, and this is for legal counsel, there's two items. First of all, the city of Waukegan, as they announced the mayor this evening, and here's all her, the advertisement that they have about the Veterans Day Parade, okay? Fiestes Patrias, a Latino cultural group, inquired about participating in the parade, and we were told that we had to fill an application. Okay, great, not a problem. So, I requested an application. Nada, nothing, 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 okay? But according to your city ordinance, your ordinance, if it is a city-sponsored parade, I don't even need to do an application, okay? Also, in the ordinance, there's nothing saying about no horses in the parade. And you can't just make up things because you don't like a person because of the color of the shirt they have on. That's not the way things are. We're in United States of America. Get with it. Next. Okay, there's a new city Tahoe that's being driven by a person who's not a city employee, like a taxi cab. You know, we're paying for this. Your vendor list that you have in the package, you're missing a lot of things. And I ask also the city checks. Why are they just being stamped and not initials by you? And is George Bridges signing his own checks, city checks, for his credit cards, expenses, or PayPal? You know what I mean? We know how the game is played, how you and George are hiding. When you do a FOIA, you know, oh, nothing comes out, but we know how to get the information. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor, that is the end of the public period?
Moving on to the consent agenda, can I have a first and a second for the consent agenda?
First.
Second.
Okay, who was the first? Alderman Florian, second was Alderman Newsome? Okay, anything that you want pulled out? We're not... Yes. But we're not down there yet. We're just on the consent agenda. Okay. Item A, a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from Monday, October 21st, 2024. Item B, a motion to approve vendor payments dated November 4th, 2024 totaling in the amount of $544,441.47. A motion to approve and ratify regular payroll dated November 1st, 2024 in a total amount Item D, a motion to approve and ratify miscellaneous payroll dated November 1st, 2024 in a total amount of $34,663.54. There being no questions to the motion, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Felix.
Aye.
Newsome.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donahworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Under reports and communication, we have a treasurer's report. Dr. Schwab?
Good evening. I'm Dr. John Schwab. I've been the treasurer for the city of Waukegan for 16 years. The treasurer in Waukegan is a part-time position, but I attend about 85% of the city council meetings. Tonight, I'm happy to report that the annual treasurer's report has been completed on time. The report was published in the newspaper on October 31st, and it had been filed with the county clerk's office, the county treasurer's office, and our own city clerk's office, Janet Kilculli. The annual treasurer report will be on the city's website, as are all the monthly treasurer reports. Any questions, please call my office at 847-599-2569.
Thank you, Dr. Schwab. Under all business, can I have a first and a second for item A?
First.
That was Alderman Martinez, second was Alderman Florian. This is a resolution approving and authorizing the proper city officials to renew the professional services agreement with Nicole Large for professional consulting services regarding researching, writing, management of local, state, federal grant funding and opportunities. Any other questions? We talked about it last time.
Yeah, can we restate what it is that, what her current salary is and what's being proposed in the new agreement?
I don't have that. Actually, it's in your briefing stuff. You've already received a briefing, and you should have it on your tablet, but...
I don't have a tablet.
Okay.
May I reiterate, I need to summarize.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and I do not actually know what the current compensation is, but the compensation proposed is $55 an hour for the hours worked per year, and that's, those amount, those hours shall not exceed 2,080 hours per 12-month period, so...and the important thing to keep in mind is that Ms. Large is not an employee. She does not receive benefits. This is a straight compensation, and she is required to pay her taxes and from out of that amount. So, this is an independent contractor salary. I think the total comes out to be $114,000, and once again, no benefits, and then that's, that is just a straight payment, and she is responsible for all of her own tax payments.
Any other questions?
Yeah, but the last discussion centered around what she was being paid, and there was an increase in, she was getting a bump, a huge bump, if I recall, but I don't recall the specifics.
No, she's getting...
So, what was, what is the current? Nobody knows?
Does, Nicole, you want to come up? Do you remember what it was? I don't have it, but I know you do have it in your, in your paperwork.
So, good evening all. I currently get paid $50 an hour and maximum 30 hours per week, so that goes out to, what is that, 80, is it $80,000 max?
How much?
Does that extend out to 80, is it $80,000 a year max that I can bill you?
But that's not 2,080 hours.
No.
You can't compare 2,080 hours to what hours did you just say, three...
30 hours per week.
Yeah. So, you've got to make sure you compare apples to...
About $78,000 a year.
So, effectively, I will be...
30 times 40 times 52.
Full-time instead of part-time.
And what's the rationale? I mean, that's a, that's a pretty big increase. Why we, what's the rationale for that?
The increase receiving...
From $78,000 to $114,000?
The increase receiving is, or a $5 an hour increase, and that would be carried out for this year, and should the one-year renewal option be taken, it would not include an increase, so it would remain the same should the city opt to renew the contract. So, I would not ask for an increase in the second year. And also, then, just $5 an hour increase, and the increase, the bump, in other words, is for the additional $10, 10 hours a week working for the city. So, that's what you're seeing. So, you're investing in me to get you more grant resources.
And it's a 1% increase when the cost of living has gone up?
Right, I'm not following COLA. I'm not following COLA. I'm coming to the city more frequently, and that's simply the increase in calculation. My original contract was written more as a remote employee. However, we're focusing more on collaboration and a large function of my grant writing here... more on collaboration, and a large pu- uh, function of my grant writing here is to write larger grants that are interdepartmental grants, so I am coming to the city more frequently, so just to absorb some of the costs to come to the city.
So if you increased your hours from 30 hours a week to 40 hours a week, you'd be making $104,000 as opposed to 78, and it's still, well, $16,000 bump, right?
But she'd also be working a lot more hours.
Bet I was talking to her, lad. Thank you.
What was your question, sir?
Go ahead, Mayor. Call for the vote.
Um, yeah, the difference is the hours that she's spending here because we're going after more and more grants. So that's the difference.
I'm happy to do so. No one called upon for meetings.
Alderman Guzman?
I also want to, uh, make sure everybody's aware, she has, uh, she has more than enough, uh, recuperated her salary and then some, what is that, $2 million so far?
Um, so the grants that I've been involved in applying for is 2.9 directly. We currently have $14.6 million in written grants that we're waiting to hear the outcome from, and we currently have 12 active grants that I am managing for the city. Since I actually saw you all a couple weeks ago, I submitted a grant for $141,000 to the Department of Energy for our first EV charger and electricity costs associated. Um, I will also let you know that with Antonio, uh, we are receiving recuperation of funds for the Baxter-Woodman Professional Services Agreement contract. Um, you can probably tell I've got some contract negotiation experience in my background as well, which helps when you receive a grant to negotiate those terms best for the city. So we're actually going to be receiving $418,000 back from the US EPA who agreed to pick up the cost for the, the PSA contract for Baxter-Woodman involved in the, uh, design in the SCITA, um, uh, design-build contract that you all approved at the last city council. So, uh, we effectively saved, um, that money for the city, uh, since I've last seen you as well.
Thank you. In my opinion, yeah, you're, you're well, you're really worth the money, so let's vote, please.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Felix.
Aye.
Newsome.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donaworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. We look forward to doing a lot more here with you all. Thanks.
Thank you for what you do.
Um, under new business, um, did you want to omnibus anything?
Mayor, I have to point out that we pulled item O from the committee, uh, um, earlier, so that item needs to be scratched. Item O.
So does item C, right?
I'm sorry?
Is it item C that needs to be pulled? Didn't...
No, item O.
C was held over.
C was held over.
Well, I'm talking about the Public Works Committee meeting. It was pulled from the agenda, we never even discussed it, so item O, you should delete.
And I think it's item L also they pulled from committee.
Okay, no, we didn't. We voted on that.
Yeah, we voted on that.
Short, item C was pulled, short-term rentals.
Item C was pulled. That was the short-term rentals.
Can we also pull...
Which one?
F as well.
So if we're going to start pulling out, I'll pull out L.
F, was F held over?
Yeah. Not held over, he just wants to pull it out from...
It was held over for two weeks.
F, F was held over until, uh, for two weeks, and it'll be on the finance and purchasing agenda.
Ones that I have that you were pulling out is C because it was held over, item F because it was held over, item O because, um, it was taken off the agenda, and then R you have a question about. Okay?
And then can we pull out L also?
You want to pull L?
Yes.
So, let's go ahead and omnibus the others. Can I have a first and a second to omnibus? First, Alderman Newsome, second was Alderman Florian. Item A, a resolution approving the amendment of the 2024 CDBG Annual Action Plan. Item B, a resolution approving the home partnership agreement. Item D, a resolution approving change order number one with Deegan Group for the Fansteel Soil Remediation Project Engineering. And there's no price on that, but it's $19,900. Item E, a resolution approving change order number three with Lake County Grading Company, LLC, for the Fansteel Soil Remediation Project, um, and this one is $10,600. So one is to remove concrete and the other one is for soil remediation. Or environmental remediation, I'm sorry. Item G, um, a resolution approving an intergovernment agreement with Northern Illinois Land Bank and appointing a committee representative and alternatives. Um, item H, a resolution authorizing amendment number two to the intergovernment agreement between the city of Waukegan and the Regional Transportation Authority con- um, contract number IGA 2017-62 for the PACE bus route improvements to expire on December 31st, 2028. I believe that contract was supposed to, um, end, I think, December of this year, so it's just been an extension. Item I, a resolution approving the settlement and release of all claims for police department workman's compensation claim numbers, 24 WCO 12299, 24 WCO 122, or 12, 12294, and 24 WCO 12296 for an amount not to exceed $18,937.43. Item J, a resolution approving a settlement and release of all claims to Tina Shannon versus the city of Waukegan at, or for an amount not to exceed 320,000. Item K, a resolution approving the purchase of two Kubota UT, UTVs for, um, or from McCullin Implement Company through Sourcewell for not to exceed amount of $46,105.64. Item M was a resolution approving the award of the 9/11 communications dispatch, um, consoles bid with X-Bic Systems for not to exceed amount of $267,084.15. This was the only bid. Um, item N, a resolution approving the purchase of radio dispatch consoles from Motorola Solutions for not to exceed amount of $1,559,834.8. Item P, a resolution approving and authorizing a memorandum of intent regarding the establishment of a joint emergency telephone system board and provision of emergency call services between the city of Waukegan and its prospective client communities, including the villages of Winthrop Harbor and Tower Lakes and the city of Park City. Item Q, an ordinance amending sections 21-63 and 21-64 of the Waukegan Code of Ordinances to establish a four-way stop-controlled intersection at West Ridgeland Avenue and Yoming Street, and a three-way stop-controlled intersection at Shields Drive and White Oak Drive. And those are the ones that we have agreed on, so, uh, roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Felix.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Donaworth.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Guzman.
Aye.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, item L, um, can I have a first and a second, and then we'll do discussion?
So moved.
Alderman Florian, a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who was the second? Alderman Newsome. Um, and this is a resolution authorizing the city of Waukegan to enter, uh, enter into a two-year sublease, um, agreement with Signature Flight Support LLC for a tenant space at the Waukegan International Airport for the purpose of establishing and operating a 911 call answering and dispatching facility in an annual amount of $38,301.72. Um, so for a breakdown of this, we are paying 60 cents a square foot for a commercial space that I've never heard of before. We are getting over 5,000 square feet. You're lucky if you could ever get a dollar eighty, and, um, I was sent on a mission to get it for 80 cents a square foot, and I came back with 60. So I don't know how much cheaper we can get it, but, um, we negotiated very well on this. But Alderman Guzman, you had a question to...
Well, yeah, I think it should be free. I mean, we're not, we're, we're not just going in there, we're, uh, upgrading their whole, their whole building, uh, electrical, panels, bathrooms, I mean, everything gets upgraded. I understand we're pulling out our systems and our systems alone, but everything else stays there. So what is the cost of that? And, uh, maybe 100 and something thousand dollars worth of repairs that the Port District would have had to do, and we're doing that, uh, out of the, I mean, just out of taxpayers' money, it should be for free. And then a couple months ago, we gave them permits and expansion rights and property to expand their airport, so, I mean, if this is going to go into a partnership, I understand 60 cents is low, but it should be a, it should be free.
Well, it's currently not a government agency. It's Signature, it is not the Port Authority, so we can't enter into that until, you know, if and when the Port Authority owned this particular building. But, um, at this point, like, I don't know that we would get it any cheaper, plus they are giving us some money towards construction. Not a lot, but they will pay for some things. So can I have, um, Mr. Perfect and Chief of Staff? And we might even need our IT Director later, because they're, they've all been involved in all of the costs of all of this and that.
Good evening, Council. Uh, so as the mayor said, this is not a lease from the Port Authority, this is a sublease from Signature Services, who is currently leasing the building, uh, so we would be leasing from Signature. So for the rent to be free, a city business would be losing money. They're currently paying rent on that space, we're renting it from them at an exceptionally good rate of 60 cents a square foot. The team that is involved in this went to multiple locations throughout the city to look for purchasing, renting, uh, pretty much anything we could to find somewhere to put a 911 center big enough to handle what Waukegan needs, and nothing would even come close. Uh, we couldn't get infrastructure to them, we couldn't get them for anything less than $3 to $4 a square foot, or purchase in a area that would not be safe to have a 911 center. So, I mean, this is the best deal we could find to get done, what we need to get done to, to keep the city safe.
Okay, so, you're saying you're not renting for the Port District, but actually the Port District is the one in charge of the, uh, of the facility and not Signature. Signature's there as a sub, sub-leasur from the Port District, which they're running the airport for them. So, so let's say all this, uh, airport expansion gets approved and everything like that, and who gets the benefit if Signature's, if Signature's still under the contract? Signature itself. So, in the long run, you could say that because of the city of Waukegan donating property and giving out permits that the city council approved, did, uh, benefit Signature and ultimately benefit the Waukegan Port District? So I still feel the, the rent should be zero.
So you're asking...
Because not, we're only, not only...
Asking a, a city business to give us rent for free.
They...
And why did we give property to them for free? To expand an airport.
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't.
Can I, can I clarify? So the, the airport expansion has not been approved. What we did up here was we allowed them to do some additional fencing and gave, you know, gave them a right-of-way on a property that they needed, but that had nothing to do with the airport expansion. That is still a, uh, an issue that has not been resolved. Um, it, we're waiting for an EPA assessment from the US government on whether they can go into the forest preserve across the street, so this has nothing to do with the airport expansion whatsoever. That this is something completely different, and Signature, as Mr. Perfect explained, rents the building from the Port District as a, a legal entity on their own, and they are subleasing part of the building to us. It, the Port District really has nothing to do with this contract, and, well, overall managing agent, but as far as this contract goes, we're entering into a contract with Signature. So, I mean, feel free to vote, no, you already approved the furniture and everything to go in there, so now we have to have somewhere to put it.
I, so the thing, ultimately, if, you just said it, we voted on for the right-of-way. Without our right-of-way or anything else like that, the airport wouldn't even be at the point with the port, with the forest preserve. So it has to start...
That's true. That is not true.
We give out the permits, not the forest preserve, nobody else.
We're not giving them permits for anything.
Eventually, we will.
No, we won't.
I don't know that. I mean, we don't, I can't tell you what would happen.
I think what Alderman Guzman is saying is there's the appearance or prep, or even potential for conflict of entrance, interest. And, um, I understand leasing and subleasing, but even in the situation described, Signature's leasing from the Port District, and, and it's the Port District, not the Port Authority. Uh, so Signature's leasing from them, kind of sublease to us, I, I'm pretty sure that the lesser Port District has to agree to a sublease, so are, is that, are we good with that still?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay, cool. So that, that's, that, the contractual piece of this is not at issue, but it still goes back to Alderman Guzman's point, there's potential for conflict of interest, yes?
How?
Can you explain, when you say conflict of interest, what do you mean legally?
Well, if you want to start talking about conflict of interest, Alron Freeman, with Alron Freeman, I mean, the, the law firms that represent from the city to the Port District.
But you also have property that you rent from the Port District, so like, how does...
Yeah, you shouldn't probably even vote on this.
I mean, is that not a conflict of interest? I mean, you've got a, you've got a, a restaurant that you lease property from the Port District. The Port District's a separate entity. They, they have nothing to do with this.
All I'm saying is, I want the rent for free. I'm not saying don't go there. All I'm saying is, I want the rent for free.
Well, I'm sure you want the rent for free for you too, but it doesn't always work that way. They didn't give you that deal and say, you're an alderman, we're going to give you the rent for free. So, um, let's just take the vote on this.
Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Hold on, I'll put a motion to hold over.
No.
No. They need to get busy on this.
Are you serious? Okay, then let's vote to overturn the holdover.
Let's just...
Anybody wants to hold something over, it gets voted down, and if he wants to hold it over, let's hold it over.
No.
No.
Let's vote to overturn it. This is, we've got to keep, get moving on this, we've got to get those people out of the basement, for crying out loud.
Plus the fact that we are...
I thought you cared about the Police Department, Mr. Turner.
We are doing co- we are doing contracts with other communities that we need to be ready to roll on, so, um...
Nothing's free. Remember when certain community groups came here and they asked for free office space, and a number of us objected to that? For the city council to try to flex and say that you should give us the space for free, I think is an egregious act, and it's, it's in poor taste. We, it's a, we need space, they have space, our dispatchers are cramped in, they're having a hard time doing their job, and we owe it to the citizens of the city to give the dispatchers, potentially one of the most important jobs in the entire city, the space to do their job. Let's get this started. Why are we holding this over? 60 cents a square foot is exceptionally low, and I would challenge anybody to find something lower, which I'm sure everyone already looked into, so there's no reason to hold it over. Let's vote on it tonight, let's get this thing moving.
And let me point out that the radios we approved a few minutes ago are a million five, um, the furniture is 267,000. You guys are holding over a lease that's going to cost us 40, 80, $120,000. It's a rounding error, and yet you're fine with a million and a half for radios and 267,000 for furniture, but you won't approve $120,000 for three years' rent?
Well, because that's all coming back to us and, um, update our technology with communication.
No, it depreciates as soon as we buy it. Will you withdraw your, your motion to hold it over?
No.
Okay.
Then can we, can I make a motion that we override the holdover?
And then...
We got a first, do I have a second on overriding? Um, Alderman Hayes.
Then how about the contractors that were, uh, bypassed under GWDC?
We're not even voting on that.
Oh, we haven't got there? Okay.
It's not even on the agenda.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can I, can I also just say that, I mean, I, I took a tour there where the, where that call standard is, it's so dated, it's blighted, it's sad. standard is, it's so dated, it's blighted, it's sad. So we need to do something, do something quick. So I said, let's just go for, let's go for it.
Okay.
Who's the first and the second on the override?
It was-
I'm the first.
I'm the second.
Wes Hayes.
Okay, so we have all members present. It is, once again, I'm gonna read our very custom, very unique rule. Every ordinance and other matter coming before the City Council shall, at the request of any member of the council, be held over until the next regular meeting before a vote is taken thereon, unless, by the consent of two-thirds of all members of the council present, the same shall be taken up for immediate consideration. We have nine Aldermen present. We have one mayor present. That constitutes a ten-member City Council. Two-thirds of a, um, ten-member City Council is six point six 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 members. We do round up, because we don't wanna have anybody hurt. So we, we need seven votes to, seven aye votes to override the holdover.
So am I voting in this?
You do.
Okay. So, um, you wanna say it how, so there's a motion?
I, I, aye to override, nay to, to hold it over.
Okay. Madam Clerk, roll call, please. Alderman Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donaworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
No.
Martinez.
Aye.
Mayor Taylor.
Aye.
The holdover, the holdover is overturned, and now you can move on to the vote.
Okay, let's vote for what is actually on, what the resolution is for item L. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Alderman Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donaworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hey, Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
No.
Martinez.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, gentlemen, for getting such a great contract for us.
It should be zero.
Can I have a, a first and a second to item R?
So, I have, I just have a question.
Okay. Okay, Florian and Newsom were the ones for item R, and Alderman Newsom had a question?
I, I, the question that I, is regarding the application, um, the, the applications for special events open January one, is that correct?
No, I believe it's, it's, no, it's like the ninth or something, it's the second, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. So it's the beginning of January.
Yes.
And we changed the period from thirty days to ninety days. So what if you have someone that comes and their event is prior to the ninety days? Then what do you do?
Then they can be disqualified, like they, you know, depending how big the event is, so like, most of them, like block parties are thirty days, that's a little bit different. But if it's an event, like that Hayes, you know, prep work and a whole lot of that kinda stuff, it's gotta be ninety days.
So they wouldn't be able to put, they wouldn't be able to get anything in prior to, um, April?
No, 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 they have to have, they can submit in, in January, but we need for larger events.
They can't have, they can't have an event until eight, March, April, 'cause you gotta, you gotta have ninety days.
Right, right, for larger events. So-
Speaking to your mic, Alderman Turner, thank you.
Excuse me. So if they wanna have an event in January, February, March, it's not possible, because the, the applications can't be submitted until January sixth or whatever. You gotta wait ninety days.
Can't you submit the year before?
Um, no, but what they can do is they can submit it and we can look at it, because it depends what it is. Like, if it's a parade, you're not gonna have a parade in March with the weather we have here. So, and that's a big event. If it's something that is smaller, or it's indoors, that it doesn't require quite the same amount, we can look at that separately. So, Chief Bridges, do you wanna?
Uh, no, uh, we were just, staff was just speaking on that, Mayor, Council. That's a very good question. That's a very good question. They are denied if you do not submit within ninety days, as it's written, but that's a very good question. We didn't think, because most of those, uh, most applications are during the warm weather that impact city services, but that is a good question.
Couldn't we allow them to apply at the end of the previous year if it was something that was gonna happen?
We don't always wait until January, because-
Well, but couldn't we, if, if it was?
Um, because-
For the first ninety days?
I would think you just wait till January, and if it's something that would be before that date, we could look at it and see what it was. I mean, that's not a, that's not a big issue.
Very, yep, I agree, Mayor. Very great question.
The reason that they wait until January is because if there's any changes that they're making, um, like if we brought changes to you, they have to have time to put those in order before they put them out in January. So that's why we don't do it at the end of the year. But we've never had anybody that did an event in, like, January, February, March.
Well, I just have, have, uh, you know, you, you can apply for it anytime. Why, why have a specific start date, you know, where you can only start, you apply January sixth? To say, put your frickin' application in whenever you like, give us a date, and we want, we like ideally thirty days or ninety days, or maybe it's by application. Oh, you wanna do that event? Eh, we're gonna need a little more time for that. It's gonna, and you inform them, it's gonna take us this much time, instead of putting that parameter.
The problem is that until we see the event, and then you become, people think like, well, you know, you're discriminating against me because, you know, this event takes more, and you're, how do I, you know, they're gonna argue, well, you're saying it takes more. There's a lot of planning in these, particularly parades with security and all of that, take a lot of planning process. That's not something you do in thirty days. But if anybody submitted in January and it was before April, we would certainly look at it and, you know, work with them.
Is this only for outdoor events? What if somebody wants to have something indoors?
Indoor generally is not, does not require a special event permit, 'cause it doesn't require-
It's not on private-
-city services, doesn't require closure of streets. I think, um, I, I think, I'm not, I think you should keep talking about this tonight, but I think that George and I, and Kelly, who helped write this, we were very much thinking about summer events, and you guys have raised a very good point here, which I, I would like to come up with a solution before you do a final vote on this. But you can keep, I mean, you could keep talking about other aspects of it if you want to.
I have a question.
A question I had.
Yeah, I had a question on it, too, Mayor, if you don't mind.
Hold this over, if that's okay with everybody?
Yes.
I second that, yeah, we were thinking the same thing down here.
Alderman Hayes, you had a question?
I just have a question about the type of events. Given the issues we've had in the past about permits being issued and people contesting the way permits were issued and when applications were submitted, you said block parties are not included in this. Is it clear in the ordinance, I'm not sure that I saw it, which events need to be applied for ninety days in advance, and which events are, only need to be applied for thirty days in advance?
So block parties are not considered special events. Those are block parties that they fill out the application for, and all we ask for is thirty days on that. Because we just need to be able to notify Public Works and police to block off streets and that kinda thing. Now, when it comes to big closures, like parades, and most of the special events require, like, blocking whole blocks off, and there's rerouting of traffic and that kinda thing, those are the things that are considered special events.
Okay, so the requirements on city personnel is what really defines what a special event is? I mean, that, that's how I see it written here.
Yeah.
I just didn't want there to be any confusion amongst people applying, as to what's a special event and what's not.
One of the things that we changed was, we used to, when you did the application, and this is what led to having two parades, is we used to just secure the date for you, but you didn't get the actual permit. You went through, you had to get your vendors in order, you had to do this, and if you didn't make all those steps, you didn't get the permit. The problem is, as we found the other year, somebody can come in and say, well, you didn't have the permit. So now I'm gonna argue that. So now, when you block that date, you get the permit, so no one else can come in and sweep that away.
Okay, all right, that's helpful, thank you.
Yes, Alderman Martinez, please.
Yeah, I just proposed to hold it over, there's just too many open-ended questions we have here.
So that's what I've already put, that it's held over. Alderman Felix?
I also did wanna add, uh, part of the community, um, community, community of the whole, is I wanted to add, I wanted to bring up the, the issue for, not issue, for the Fiesta Patrias, that date. I wanted to, my, my idea was to, for us to take it over with a partner, of course, kinda like, um, uh, what do you call it, um, what's that other event that we, we, we budget for and we have it, Scoop?
Scoop.
Yeah, so I wanted to do something similar, um, so we can make sure we budget on time for us to, to, uh, partner up with someone, of course. But, uh, you know, that's something that, that maybe that's the elephant in the room, that's if we allude to Fiesta Patrias, we, a whole bunch of, uh, problems that we had. That's something that I, that I, I think it should be in the committee of the whole, that I added it, 'cause I requested-
It'll be on the next agenda when we talk about those things.
Does this tie in to that?
Well, you'd have to do an RFP for that, because that would be how, instead of submitting an application, they would have to submit an RFP.
Right.
And then it gets a little more complicated, because, um, right now, when outside people do it, we don't get into the finances of it. And so if they lose money on the event, they lose money on it. We'd have to check and see how much money could the city afford to lose on something.
Right.
So that's the difficulty of it, but that will be discussed at the next one, and this won't come up again. That was on the committee of the, or that was on community development, wasn't it? So that, this-
Not on this agenda.
Okay. Okay. So-
Just to, and just to answer your, your question, though, an application for a special event, you do not, that does not require for governmental events. So if the Park District is holding something, if the city is holding something, that is not impacted by this. And it's a separate process, and the city could, or the city or the Park District or something could block out a day in a location, and they would have that.
I see what you're saying.
They'd take priority over private special events.
This is separate, right? The, what I'm talking about is a little separate, we can decide to do it and we'll just block out that day?
There's no conflict in what you're talking about and the, the amendments that we're talking about tonight.
Okay.
I would just, at the risk of being a huge downer here, that's a, that's a huge amount of liability on the city, if we were to partner with somebody for a parade, if somebody got hurt, or if there was something else that happened, so.
We do it with Scoop for three days.
Yeah, I, but-
Or two, or something like that.
And it's not the size of event that that is. It's not anywhere close to that. So it's just something that, like, that is quite a, quite a lot of money that we'd have to be prepared for, and, um-
I think we budget, what, fifty for Scoop?
Yeah, you'd be budgeting about five hundred for, for something like that.
Well, it'll be on the committee of the whole.
But they would have to, the best way is for them to submit an RFP, and they would have to list all their expenditures, and they would have to cover the cost of it. Now, the RFP, first time you do an RFP, is gonna be hard for anybody to do an RFP. And that's gonna be tricky, because they haven't necessarily been trained in how to do an RFP.
Yes, I, I do understand that, too.
Yeah, so it's something that we need to think through. It's certainly an option, you know what I mean? But it's hard to make the playing field level when some people know how to do an RFP and some don't. So, but that we'll talk about at the next committee of the whole. So we're gonna hold this over. So with that, there being no ordinances, Alderperson time. Madam Clerk? Alderman Felix.
Oh, uh, thank you. Just wanna give a few updates on what's going on in, in my ward. Uh, so I had a, people call me, and also myself, I drove, driven around at night in the downtown area, where the food trucks are parked. The, a lot of these food trucks are not detaching from the actual truck, and they're just, a lot of the times, they're blocking the stop. So I did, I reached out to, uh, to Traffic Division, so they're gonna be looking out for that, so, uh, we're looking to solve that issue. But also, the detaching part also includes where some cars are sticking out on the street, so that's also, we're, we're looking to address that. I did meet up with Park District about two weeks ago, met with the Commissioner Anton Matthews and, uh, Director of Parks, Quincy. Uh, so we went over, 'cause I, I've been getting a lot of calls where, usually during the summer, but also right now, we have a lot of, um, you know, homeless or different individuals going there in the park at night or during the day, uh, you know, what, what they say and what I say is suspicious activity. So I addressed that with, uh, the Commissioner and the Director of Parks, and, you know, they're, they were willing to help, help out and, and also do something on their end. So they actually added a solar camera there, along, along the bridge, which, and it took less, maybe about a week to take care of, so thank you to the Park District. But besides the, the camera, the solar camera that we added, that they added, they also added some trashcans there, because there's a lot of tra, foot traffic there, so that, that helps out. We also went over cleaning up some brush around, um, towards the end, towards the dead end, which they took care of it, you know, so thank you so much for the Park District, for working fast and, and meeting with me and addressing some of these concerns. They, they went over a few things with me, you know, on my end, I would just wanna light everything up, so you don't see people, you know, just hanging out over there, but we have to have a balance. We can't just light, like, they can't just light everything up, because, you know, it also brings in more people to hang out at night over there, so it's always a balance to see what they can do. I also asked for them to cut the, the branches along the, the facing, like, towards the bridge. So at some point, on our end, the city end, we, I'm, I'm hoping to, um, install maybe a light that faces that direction of the, of the, um, the bridge, so something gonna work on with, with the staff. But, uh, thank you again for the Park District. Along my, along the, the ward, there's been a lot of, you know, trimming of the trees to let lighting, you know, to help out with the lighting around the area. Public Works has been doing a great job with my requests, you know, and just as simple as trimming the trees helps out a lot. As you guys can see, um, on the, on the lot, I mentioned it a lot, I love looking at the lot, 'cause it got, just fully got done last week. So there was a part that got done, and then there's a smaller part of the lot, N, on Butrick and Washington that got done. If you can see, that's a good example of before and after. Before, it was dark, scary, and we trimmed up the trees. We allowed the light to go in there now, at night. Our businesses that we have on the Washington corridor can walk, can park freely there, they can go to the clubs or bars or whatever, and they can, that helps our, our city overall, 'cause we have, we allow business to feel safe. And they also added trashcans, so thank you for, for our staff. Again, I, I go to Chief Bridges with a list, and, you know, we work on it. Thank you so much, Chief Bridges, for, for working with me. One other project that I'm working on is communication, different options for communication. I also went to Chief Bridges and, uh, Naif from Public Relations, and we're looking to hopefully at least start to having that, that conversation before budget comes through, so that we can add some, hopefully, if we go through with some of the changes, we can add budget for that. So some of the things that I'm working on, working on lighting as well, I spoke to, uh, I'm working for lighting in the fourth ward. Once, you know, we fixed issues that I, because I represent the fourth ward, once we fixed issues for the fourth ward, then, of course, we expand, but I'm working, you know, I spoke to the engineer, and, and we have plans on hopefully being able to account for what the city is responsible for, and then we able to light up some of these neighborhoods that are, you know, more, you know, you have suspicious activity or you see, you see crime. So that's something that I'm also working on, you know, and our staff is, is working, they're working. A lot of the people in my ward are reaching out to me, even outside of the wards, but in my ward are reaching out to me with their concerns. I'm meeting up with them, you know, I'm getting pictures sent to me of things to take care of, it does help out, you know. I did say this once before, is that, you know, you have to ask what you can do for your, you know, as JFK said, what you can do for your country, but you can also ask yourself what you can do for the city, and just sending us pictures of concern, and we can go out there and address those things. So there's, there's a lot of work to be done, but I'm, I'm working on getting a few things done. This, the last two weeks, I did attend, I'll make it quick, I did attend Cocktails with a Purpose by Equal Hope. They're an organization that focuses on helping women that are uninsured or have financial issues, affording health services. They help them, get them in the right track, and they had like a cocktail thing at one of the bars in the third ward. And it was, it was a pleasure joining them, but I also wanted to mention this, because I would like the, the community to look up Equal Hope, and if they know someone that needs help, it's a good resource for, for women. And they have some stuff for men, I believe. This weekend, I actually joined with Nicole to plant some trees. She was out there getting her hands dirty, and, you know, I tried to get my hands dirty, but I got my shoes dirty for sure. But we planted some trees, and, you know, I did hear some comments about they're dead trees. They're not dead trees, I mean, we're getting towards the season where some, some of these trees go dormant, but they also were backed up with, with certain specific dirt that can, you know, make sure that we keep them alive, so. It's a lot more information out there than, than what's, there's the truth, the truth is that we, our trees are good. I did, I want to say congratulations to Armando Peña, that he's in the sixth ward, I believe. I attended a grand opening, he does a food pantry, and also other community programs for, for, you know, to learn English, and programs for kids for to do the arts. So congratulations to Armando Peña and the club, Apacel, Apacel. Junto's NFP, they did our, our parade. They're actually offering scholarships for bilingual students in Waukegan, so, you know, definitely look them up. And surprisingly, I didn't know that, that we're going to have this event in the Boys and Girls Club, they had a guitars over guns, it's a new program, they actually opened two places in Waukegan, where they have their programs running, which one is in the Waukegan High School, the Brookside, and then, I believe, John Lewis Middle School. That means that what they help is, they help students start playing instrument. It could be in different areas of playing music, but they, they help them, and, and they actually adapt current music to help them learn these instruments or the art of music. But we actually had, oh, I forget the Bennett Taylor, I believe, yes, he performed. You know, you can see, when it's someone that's actually popular and they have influence, these kids were listening, they were out there jamming and really motivated to be part of the program. Taylor Bennett is the sibling of Chance the Rapper, he was over here at the Bullet Boys and Girls Club. And thanks to Senator Johnson, she's the one who worked on getting funding for the guitar over guns, so shout out to them. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Alderman?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Leaf pickup. The mayor alluded to a few things I had questions about with the leaf pickup in her mayor's report earlier. And thank you, Mr. Chris, for the update on the LRS leaf pickup. Actually, one of the pictures that I called about my first date for leaf pickup was last Wednesday, October the 23rd, which the residents are supposed to be parked on the odd side of the street. The resident that called me actually lives on the odd number side of the street, but the neighbor parked his truck in front of his leaves on the curb, where he couldn't get his leaves picked up. So I got that call, and now the mayor alluded to, I guess, my question would be, if it's your leaf pickup day, which mine is going to be this week, Wednesday and Thursday, the residents of the fifth ward do not have to abide by the alternate parking. Just don't park in front of your neighbor's leaves or your leaves. You park on either side of the street, or how are we going to do that? Because I know the mayor said you won't get a ticket. Is it fair to give that information out to the residents that? So the, okay, so it's not parked there all night, if it's, okay. It'll be odd, it'll be odd numbers again, no, the six, even number, on the first day. So they will park on the, they can park on the odd side if they need to, so that the leaves can be picked up. Okay, if, if any of my residents call me, I'll make sure that I let them know that just park your car someplace where there's no leaves until the leaves are picked up.
And I highly advise people use their driveways as much as they can, so that we keep as much of the road clear, and that you don't block your neighbor's leaves.
Right, and, and that's another issue that we talked about with Airbnb tonight, with people parking on the streets. We already don't have enough parking where people don't use their driveways, they park on the street. And so it's just, I get an email every week that there's a resident that has six cars parked on the street and does not use their driveway. How do we get the residents to abide by the ordinance? I know we have the alternate parking, but can, we can't have an officer sit every night or every day going down the same street to make sure people are abiding by the ordinance. So please abide by the ordinance and use alternate parking, unless it's your leaf pickup day. Thank you.
Alderman Turner?
Thank you very much. All right, so in the sixth ward, we continue to have car burglaries or attempted burglaries. Several neighbors have reported to me in the last couple of weeks, since our last council meeting, that their cars were either burgled or they have ringed video of guys, a guy trying to get in. I had two neighbors come to me and report that their garage had been burgled, and they actually had video of a culprit dragging a suitcase full of their stuff, dragging it, not rolling it, dragging it down the alley. So, folks, I just can't caution you enough about locking your cars, removing valuables, securing your property as best you can, and remember that often crimes like these, burglaries, are crimes of convenience, so culprit is walking around, driving around, he sees what he thinks is easy target, he'll be in and out, but most often, it is someone right in our neighborhood. It's one of our neighbors that's familiar with your pattern or your habits and takes advantage of it. So do your best to secure your properties. Also, we had a couple of calls, one in particular was a bonfire. So we do allow some open fire, my neighbor next door, they sit out there all the time, and they have a little small steel, I don't even know what to call it, steel pit, yeah, fire pit, yeah, and they, they burn small pieces of wood, like the same thing you would burn in your fireplace. And they sit around and they watch TV outside and they have a good time, but, yeah. Last week, we had one, it was a huge bonfire. I mean, they were burning logs back there, and there was a lot of smoke, and there were embers flying up fifty, a hundred feet in the air, and so that absolutely is, is not allowed. And so we did have the fire department go over here, it was, you know, it was, it was a situation. So no open, no, no bonfires, you can have a small open fire in the steel pits, or even a pit in your, in the ground. But the cotton scent of smoke, you know, we have a lot of elderly neighbors who, and some young folks, too, who have respiratory conditions, and you don't want smoke blowing into their houses. We had a shooting in the sixth ward. This was about two, roughly two houses down from my house in the alley. It was a negligent shooting, because there are no accidental shootings, it's negligence, but it's also illegal firearm, actually, too, as I understand it, I didn't get, yeah, so, anyway. Apparently, there was a seventeen-year-old, a fourteen-year-old, they each had guns. Seventeen-year-old points his gun, the fourteen-year-old pulls the trigger unintentionally, so it's negligent. Fourteen-year-old's in a bad way. You know, I don't, I don't know how we can, what we can better do to discourage the possession and use of illegal firearms. We have literally thousands of gun control laws on the books, and it's seventeen-year-old and fourteen-year-old, they had them illegally. Alderman Donanworth and I have offered rewards for information leading to the arrest and conviction of people in possession of illegal firearms, no takers. So I can tell you is, you know, if you got them, learn how to use them, learn how to handle them, and try to avoid having your negligent discharge. Once that bullet leaves the barrel, it can change your life, and obviously whoever a bullet might strike, but it'll change your life, too. Please put the guns down. Lastly, oh, I'm sorry, chief, I don't know who in the department, who I should direct this to, but I came across two flyers for insurance companies here in Waukegan that offer insurance with no license needed, no, they don't need a driver's license. They're going to give you insurance anyway, who should I get those to?
You can collect and forward them to me and not get them to our traffic.
Yeah, they're, they're at home, so, I'll give it to whom?
You can forward them to me.
Okay. I will, yeah, you'll get them.
We can also send copies to the Illinois Attorney General, because that sounds like a fraudulent business.
I'll get those out to you guys, I'll try, try and do it tonight, but no guarantee, I'm getting sleepy. Finally, I would like to make a motion that we hire or allow to be hired, how we would best be termed and implemented, bringing on an attorney, a lawyer, to represent the alderman. Often, we get information that, or don't feel that our position is being represented, and we'd like to bring another attorney on to represent the alderman, not the mayor, and this attorney would be paid for through the same budgeting that's already been approved for our current legal expenditures. That's my motion.
I'll second to hear that out.
First, or you say something?
I'll second this, I can hear it out.
Thank you.
But just so you know, the corporate counsel works for all of us. He doesn't represent me or any, any one person here. So his, their interest is the city's interest. You can certainly hear it.
Just to be clear, that's not something that can be voted on tonight, but would you like to put that for discussion on a future agenda? Is that what you're asking for? Mayor, it's up to you.
Thank you, and good, and good night.
Alderman Donanworth?
Yes, thank you very much. Again, like, every time I, I speak up here, I try to speak for, you know, my residents, my constituents and stuff, and I want to thank, you know, wholeheartedly the city staff, you know, people I talk to every single day. I mean, I'm emailing every day, I've got people calling me every day. Their response is phenomenal, from City Yards, from, you know, City Hall, from everyone here, actually. And I just want to say, you know, attaboy, and I thank you very much, and I really appreciate it. If I don't say it to your face, I, I truly mean it. Although I do want to thank a couple of people here. These trees, they've been sticking these trees out, and I've been having a whole bunch of phone calls on them, because people are upset, because they're afraid they're going to go down into their waist lines out to the street. And then there was a couple of trees that were planted that were actually toxic to dogs, and had fruit that dropped, and if the dogs go out, they could, they could eat this fruit. One of them was a Kentucky coffee tree, and the lady sent me a whole bunch of pages on it, you know, where it's bad for the dogs, dogs can get sick, dogs can die, but I made the phone call out, and I want to thank Niaf Simone, Nicole Large, of course, Chris Garland, and Alonzo Jenkins, and Chief Bridges, and, and the mayor got on the whole thing, too, you know, to help, help with the trees. And we were able to remove those trees from this lady's house, and both of them were toxic. The other one was another toxic type, and I want to thank you on that. And then the neighbor next door, he has a dog, too, and he didn't want one in front of his house, and we are working on that right now, and I want to thank Nicole for helping us out with that, and, you know, being the in-between, you know, Chris Garland, and you guys do what you can do to, you know, try to get these out there, and just, people would just ask, how come nobody mentioned anything to them? You know, somebody could have, you know, hey, you want a tree? And I understand it's kind of tough, you know, doing something like that, but, you know, they would have, they would have at least wanted to say, hey, listen, you know, let me know, or something in the paper. Hey, if you want a tree, let us know, because we got trees, you know, and definitely we can take them out, you know, and put them out, but the neighbor does not want the tree, and hopefully that'll be coming out, out shortly. The leaves are getting sucked up, they came down my street today, and I watched the guy, he did an excellent job, and, I mean, they have long enough hoses here, from, from what I can see, just as long as you don't pile them too far away, and I bet you it's a good nine-foot hose, or ten-foot hose, and they're doing a good job. I saw them on East Bonnie Brook, and I saw them over in the Chestnut area, and they were picking them up, and, you know, the guy's taking his time, you know, make sure he gets it all up and makes it nice and clean, so. I gave him a thumbs up as I drove by. I just want to remind you that the fourth and the fifth, which is today, and tomorrow, they're picking up in the seventh ward, and then also the eighteenth and nineteenth, they will be picking up in the seventh ward, too. And like I told my neighbors, I said, don't park in front of these piles of leaves. I said, and also don't put sticks in their leaves, because one of the neighbors asked, you know, can I put them all out at the same time? I said, yeah, but you have to put them in different piles, and just make it a little easier for them to do what they got to do. And then, other than that, you know, definitely stay safe, because we got things going on, we've got the car burglaries going on, and things, you see something, call the police. I mean, you know, because you have no idea, you know, what's going on out there, and, you know, definitely you don't need to confront anybody. I mean, you see something going on, give the police a call, and nine times out of ten, they get there, too. And some of my traffic calming devices have been fantastic. I had to flash, flashing stop signs, and, and a couple of other things, so. Everything seems to be going good, and the police are out there taking care of those problems, too. And they've written a whole bunch of tickets on a lot of the things that I had going on. And I just want to thank, of course, the police department, you know, was in there also. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Florian?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Leaf pickup in the eighth ward is the same days as the seventh, so tomorrow, and then again, the eighteenth and nineteenth. You've heard the instructions up here a couple of times. Tomorrow is a very important day. I feel like I've said this before, but I think this is one of the most important elections of my lifetime, so make sure everyone votes and has their say. There's not just the president on the ballot, there's also local elected officials as well. So please make sure you make a plan to vote tomorrow if you haven't out already. Thank you.
Alderman Hayes?
Pass.
Alderman Bolton?
Yes, I want to personally thank all staff, all departments, for your special meetings, all your support to us as aldermen, taking all my calls, Public Works. I'm always getting calls every day, and thank you to Daphne, HR, I can go on, Chief George Bridges, thank you. I just want to thank all you all for what you do, your department work, all your reports, your extended hours. You go above and beyond. And I got a chance last week to attend UMA's annual celebration. UMA is also the organization, non-for-profit, that has opened a grocery store within the first ward on Tenth Street. It's called Harvest Market, and they're also about to open the extended program, educational program that offers skill development to help anyone that wants to further advance themselves. So that was an excellent event, gala. I got a chance to be also one of the speakers there to represent the council and the city for that, and I'm sorry, my other peers, you all missed that event, it was great. Also, I want to- event. It was great. Also, I want to acknowledge all the other anniversaries and Shiloh Baptist Church, one hundred and seventh year. I attended theory event, Word of Life, I attended theory event, House of Prayer, New Hope, I understand Baptist Church, they celebrated their event. There were so many events, and I just bounced from one event to another. Also, for the first ward, the leaf pickup will be November twenty-seventh and twenty-ninth. And I also want to thank you, my constituents, for constantly calling me. I get all kinds of calls, all kinds at hours of the day, but thank you for reaching out for me. Any further concerns, you can reach me at two-two-four-six-zero-seven-eight-four-four-five. Thank you.
Alderman Guzman.
Good evening. I want to start with apologizing to Antonio and Jesus. I got a little tongue twisted there and your names, for some reason, I don't know why. And your middle name, my middle name is your first name, and I don't know why I keep missing it up, but I apologize, Antonio, Jesus, also. Second, I want to, I'm very excited that we unanimously approved the grant writer, I think two million dollars, and then everything else that is in the works. I mean, it's some great work for projects and money that we would have never received. And that's, the city's coming into it. So I want to say I'm glad to hear that. Leaf pickup for the second ward, it went a little rocky. I want to say thanks to Director Garland. He gave us a, basically, a summary of what, what happened in the ward. I'm going to be going to these residents to make sure that these cars are not parked in front, that it's only leaves only and not branches, and that obviously it's not somebody with a rake picking these leaves up. And it's much more. And I'm very happy that they have cameras, so nobody can come in here and complain, well, my stuff wasn't picked up or anything like that. Here you go. Proof's in the pudding. Here, this is what your house actually looked like. So I'm very happy at that. For our next pickup is November thirteenth and fourteenth. And again, we have the last one, the twenty-seventh and the twenty-ninth, which I believe LRS is doing a fantastic job. I want to say Halloween, I thought was great. I was driving around. I gave out, I don't know, five, six bags of candy. I mean, candy got really expensive, but, you know, it was a nice time. I saw some really cool costumes. It's a nice family-ornated holiday. I know some people don't like it. I, I kind of appreciate it. Some of the costumes are a little weird, but, you know, it's in the eye of the beholder. But it was cool. Okay? So I'm happy everybody got a nice Halloween. Next, again, like Alderman Florian, tomorrow is Super Tuesday. It's election, so please come out and vote if you haven't voted. Okay. Veterans Day is next week. It's a great time. There's a parade going on. If you're a veteran, I know a lot of the restaurants give you free meals on that day. And so it's a great day to honor, because we are the land of the free and the home of the brave because of you. And salute.
The veteran box?
I just want, I'm sorry to interrupt. There's a veteran box downstairs. We're accepting donations.
And I'm sure they all appreciate that, okay? About the lease, I voted no. I'm, you know, I always feel that Waukegan gives, 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 and we never take back. So I would have been happy with the zero amount, but other aldermen felt that we should pay. And I felt differently. But it moves forward. Alderman meeting, again, November sixteenth, from one to three PM. My telephone number's eight-four-seven-three-nine-zero-twenty-six-ninety. And my home address is twenty-three-hundred Pearçall, P-E-A-R-S-A-L-L Parkway, obviously in Waukegan, from one to three PM to discuss issues in our ward, in the ward. And before we move forward, we've been dealing with this revenue allocation fund for some time. It's, they did a huge presentation back in days. Now, I think we've had three meetings now. Two of them were, one for the allocation funds for the Genesee Street, to be redone from the bottom up. The second was risk management on a ten-million-dollar fund for any expenses on, any insurance liabilities. And then today was presentation on, to move water out west in other communities, renegotiate with other cities to become pri, to become primary sellers of water and be a true game player. And I think this is a good thing. And, and we're moving forward, but, I mean, I want to put in the motion to move that forward, to move the, to the next time we do the revenue allocation, to move, to vote, not just discuss, to actually vote on putting the two million dollars to start off with, and a million dollars a year for ten years. And hopefully, that's enough to sustain and move forward for us to build a better Waukegan and a better future and a better revenue source that's guaranteed. Okay? Because we could say, well, we're gonna go get stores, we're gonna do this to get other businesses, but we don't know. We, we invest the money to hopefully get future business. This is a guaranteed. We invest money. There are communities out there that want our water. There are communities out there that'll pay us in guaranteed money. As long as we have the infrastructure and the capacity to get it to them, they will purchase. So this is guaranteed, ladies and gentlemen. This is not something that you're just gonna throw out there and hopefully you get money back. This is guaranteed. You will get it back. So move, motion to move this forward for vote.
So what I would recommend is that you put in writing, and we discuss this, your plan, and we can work on putting together, basically putting that into a resolution that could be presented. The, the rap is already on the agenda, not this, not next, can be the whole, but the next one. And there's, you know, basically, what I would say is, you've got support from one person, but we don't know exactly what goes in it. So let's put that into a resolution, see if you get two people to support it, and then it'll just go on the agenda as is, for discuss, I mean, for consideration, which could be amendment, but for consideration and vote.
Great. Okay, next, daylight savings has started.
Does that need a vote real quick, or we're good?
Considering that we're already putting, considering that this is, the rap is already on the agenda in two weeks, and the, to the alderman's point, this has to move towards some sort of decision. I think the best way to do this is to have the alderman work with corporation counsel on putting that into a written form, have two, basically, aldermen sign off on it as cosponsors, and then it will go on the agenda. But not in two weeks, because in two weeks, we start to deal with the remainder of the legislative proposals. So it'll be in two meetings.
Two meetings, one month. Okay, like I was saying, daylight savings time has showed up. I hope everybody was okay on that, that nobody was too early for work. But remember, that means when this time happens, that means it's starting to get darker sooner. Children are out there, the buses, so please don't go around the stoplights when they stop, or when you see any, even a pace bus or anything like that. Be very vigilant, vigilant on who comes around that bus from the front or the rear. So take a little bit of time, and let's keep our kids and people safe. Thank you. Have a good night.
Alderman Martinez.
Madam Steady Clerk, the City Council. First, I want to start with the LRS pickup for the third ward. It continues. The overall feedback that I've been getting has been very, very positive. I've been in text with pictures. So I want to congratulate LRS for their continued effort for picking up the leaves. Also, I'm very impressed that I received this from Chris Garland, also LRS. What you don't see is an update of houses that leaves were not picked up. And there's, there's pictures here and reasons why. So, you know, just to let you know, there's different reasons why people, leaves haven't picked up. But please understand that each LRS, as the mayor indicated earlier, there is a camera. So please don't call me telling me that your leaves weren't picked up or they drove by you. So everything is so nicely illustrated here. I will go through it. My hope is that people will comply with it. It's very important that these leaves get picked up. With that being said, I also want to remind you that.
They're mixed with leaves.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's different reasons why. For example, there's one that says here, branches were mixed with leaves. One that they were, the leaves were actually raked to the street. So it indicates, and it's actually got the picture of the home, okay? But please understand that, again, that there, there is cameras. And again, my hope is that everyone will comply with that. With that being said, I also want to remind everyone that our next leave pickup, they're always on a Monday and a Tuesday. So our next leave pickup will be on the eleventh and the twelfth, and the twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth. Also, I'd like to thank the mayor and the office and public work for installing new decorative garbages that were placed on Grand Avenue. Hopefully, they will get filled up. I appreciate that. I've got positive reviews from the businesses saying, hey, thank you. We haven't had a garbage out there for many years. It is located by the Domino's at the East Plaza. So my goal is to have more placed out there. So I do want to thank the mayor also, again, for, for doing that. And also for, for black topping the street there at the East Plaza on Grand Avenue. The alley was, was completely repaved. That looks very nice. It was clean. Getting a lot of compliments from business owners thanking me for that. And again, I, I can't do it by myself. I thank all those, the powers that be that helped me do that, to accomplish that. Also, I just want to congratulate one of my businesses, Grand Appliance on Grand Avenue in Waukegan. They have been in Waukegan since nineteen thirty. They are a staple in Waukegan. They were recognized and honored by the Illinois Association of Park Districts with, for the Best Friend of Illinois Parks Award. This award recognizes a business or a corporation that has demonstrated outstanding support of, of a local park district, forest reserve, conservation, recreation, and/or recreation agency. Such a thanks to the Waukegan Park District who nominated, nominated the Grand Appliance. And they were, again, they were chosen as, as the grand winners in Illinois. So again, I commend them. Again, they've been around since nineteen thirty. If you need to get ahold of me, I can be reached at eight-four-seven-three-nine-zero-two-six-eight-nine. And please, tomorrow, hopefully, everyone, if you already have not voted, voted, please vote tomorrow. You know, your, your vote is your voice. Tomorrow, we'll be making history, and I hope that, you know, that once it's been said and done, that we can put our differences aside and do what's best for what we are, what we're known for, America, right? We're a big melting pot, many ethnicities. And so therefore, I hope that whoever wins tomorrow, that there, there'll be a change around, and we can go back to being the great country that we are. All right? If you need to get ahold of me, please call me at eight-four-seven-three-nine-zero-two-six-eight-nine. I just ask that you be safe, be mindful, and for all, let's all be a great neighbor. Thank you and good night.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Turner and Florian, all those in favor?
Aye.